Board meeting 2021. We need a motion to sign the warrants.
So moved.
All in favor? Twenty of yours. This meeting is going to be late. It's double tides is why. I am sorry to dig the beach twice. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes June 9th. One second.
Second.
All in favor? Old business response from the fire marshal. We had a question about, is it anyone? We had a question about just procedures, co enforcement officer procedures and what the town's responsibility was at the last meeting. So I reached out to the Office of Public Safety and which is under the fire inspector's office. And this is what response we got after much discussion. As a follow up after a recent phone call now that I have been made aware of that there are no construction permits issued, only shoreline zoning, I wanted to follow back around on the subject. I advised the individual that I spoke with that it would be in the best interest of the municipality to check with the town's legal council as to if a permit could be held up prior, and they're talking about a shoreline permit, could be held up prior to permit issuance from the office of state of the fire marshal. I may have misunderstood that no local construction permits are issued, only shoreline zoning. As I mentioned, having the municipality tell the owner or owner's representative, such as a builder, contact our office and get it in writing that permit is or is not required would be the best scenario. But I do not believe that would hold up permitting with a shoreline zoning permit. The best scenario is to speak with the municipality's legal council to find the best and legal approach to these types of cases. So that was it. So apparently we're kind of going to catch 22. Since we don't have a building ordinance, from what I understand, and we only have shoreline zoning, then the co enforcement officer is only obligated to say yea or nay to building and zoning. And it's the owner's responsibility and the builder of the, that work before the owner to acquire any other permits, especially we're talking about in public use buildings.
From the state.
From the state. So it's up to them to go to the state and get permission to build particularly for whatever safety because it's restaurants, motels, hotels, B and Bs, things that are.
Public use.
Or any, any building, commercial building with two stories.
And I think that's pretty much.
I had a trash course.
In keeping with what you said last, last time.
That it would behoove us to sit, to tell anybody constructing a new building or even reconstructing a building, renovating a building. And I should be more aware of that. So especially if public.
You have to follow all state rules.
Follow all the state rules. But it's not up to the municipality has no enforcement on that. They can enforce it because we don't have ordinance. We haven't adopted the state building code.
Well, we don't have to adopt it.
We haven't done it.
We have to follow it, just like the DEP laws and all the other state laws.
The builders do, but the municipality is not running around checking on it.
Sure.
So that's that. That is old business.
Now, I got, I got one question under old business. We're going to put the van stand back out for bid, correct?
I'd like to.
Because we, we as a board, we have to put it out for bid legally.
Well, that would be something we'd have to put on, well, who's going to be asked to pay for it? We might want to reconsider that for the article.
This is down near the Masons or something.
Well, there's no, there's no, they can't even have a meeting that has issues.
They backed out the piece of the truth.
It was supposed to go to a special meeting at the RLF and there was two, they didn't have a quorum and they couldn't reconsider that bid that we agreed on. So it's all back to.
We can't agree on a bid, that's what I'm saying. Anything over $3,000, the board cannot.
It's $5,000.
Is it $5,000?
It's $5,000.
Inflation, yeah. We just can't prove that.
Well, it was a bid and we did vote on it, but it had, it had contingencies and the contingency didn't win.
The contingency was at the RLF. So they'd pay for it. Because otherwise we've got to go to the town.
And they want to have it put back out to bid. So do you want to make a motion to put it back out to bid?
I'll make a motion to put it back.
Second, all in favor?
We need to speed up on that.
So is Mandy, Mandy Alver on there? I see. Excuse me. Yes. Mandy, you're on. Hi, Mandy. Any people listening? Yes.
Renee, have they got copies of the presentation?
Yes, they do.
Okay, good. So this is just a brief update and a discussion of where we are related to the wastewater treatment upgrade. In case there's anybody in the audience or anybody listening who has, is not familiar with the history and what's going on, a brief review of the scope. So we did a plant evaluation back in 2018 during that evaluation of the wastewater system. We identified that there are four pump stations, Main Street, South Street Extension, Monument Street and Johnson Street that requires a mechanical upgrade, including replacing the pumps, their control panels and installing some communication telemetry to report alarms to the operator. At the wastewater treatment facility, which is a primary treatment facility consisting of two settling tanks, the identified scope of the work was to replace the headworks, which is the initial treatment when materials come in right now to make it safer for the operator. There's a grinder that's kind of suspended in a tank right now, which is difficult to access and that unsafe for maintenance and difficult for maintenance. So we would improve that situation. We were going to retrofit the imho tanks and side note, as the board's aware, we are doing a phase one emergency repair right now with the funding that we received from the DEP and from the CDBG funds. We have that advertised bids are due to be received on July 9th. Tough bidding time. We will hope, we do have two contractors who've taken out plans and are interested. As you know, we just recently had the pre-bid meeting and hopefully we'll receive bids from both of them that are roughly in the budget that we have available. That first phase of work, we're hoping for something in about a half a million dollar range and we have that already funded through the existing grants that we've received. The other work that we're looking in the bigger picture, which is the rest of the project, is to replace disinfection equipment, including pumps and tanks. General structural repairs to the existing facility, including roof, ventilation, doors, just anything that's needed to try to get the building more secure. Electrical controls replacement and upgrades to the lab equipment. The total estimated cost of that project is approximately $5 million. That did include some escalation from the original report 2018. But as I kind of noted on the next page, on page two, where I talk about what the funding is, we've tried to set a $5 million budget as a target because it's difficult to get grant funds and we wanted to really minimize the amount of loan funds that would be required to complete this project to minimize the impact on the town's finances. We've been able to do pretty well as far as grants go. We have the DEP bond that we got for $400,000, that's all grant. CDBG grant of $990,000. And then we recently received the USDA World Development offer of $1,610,000 grant for a total of $3 million of grant funds out of the $5 million. So 60%, which is great. The only loan that the town is looking at doing is $2 million loan that comes with the USDA money, which is really kind of the focus of what I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about. Renee's working with bond counsel now to get a warrant article on your August 4th town meeting warrant for voting to approve this loan, which is required by both USDA and town policy to get that voted on. So we just need to talk about how that loan's going to be repaid. Any questions or comments I want to, covered so far? So the World Development of $2 million has a low interest rate of 1.25%, which I mean, that's one good thing about the current climate is that that's about as low as you ever see their loans. The loan is repaid over 29 years, which results in a payment of $82,660 per year. It's really a 30-year loan, but they don't count the first year that you're doing construction. So they cut that out and make it a 29-year repayment. One of the conditions of that award to the town is that you also reserve $8,927 per year of short-term asset reserve in, as part of your operating budget. And the town's already been doing that, like at a, at a tune of $10,000. So it's actually, it shouldn't impact your overall budget as far as wastewater goes. But I just want to mention it because not every town does and sometimes that's something you have to kind of think of as an increase that you're going to be doing. But in this case, you've already been doing that. It's a condition of their approval. So the next three pages, I just put out some scenarios for discussion. And this is looking at different ways to pay things back. In the past, the town does have a history of using taxpayer, the tax base and spreading out the loans. So the three scenarios range from completely being repaid by sewer users to something that the taxpayers would be bearing the weight of repaying the loan. So scenario one on page four, looking at what the projected future operation and maintenance cost is. And just to be clear on this, this is the number that we used in the application based on escalating at 5% a year from what you're currently doing. That's not fixed. You don't have to do that. That's just the scenario that we present to the funding agency as they look at what you can afford. So that 203,800 is nothing in stone. That's just what we used in the application. So if you have that, the reserve and the loan payment, your annual sewer budget for the users with total 295,387 with the 443 users, and I know not everybody pays the same and some pay more, some pay less, but this is on average, that's really the only way to calculate it for this kind of discussion. The user rate would go up from right now, the $86 a quarter to $170 a quarter. Or if that translates, that's the minimum that you're charging right now. That translates as going from 344 a year to 688, so basically doubling the sewer users. If the users, this is such a small number of people that are getting a bill. The next scenario on page five. You could make any combination of sewer users paying some amount of the loan and taxpayers paying some amount of the loan. So I just threw one out there and by saying, okay, in the future, what if you wanted to make the minimum quarterly billing $100? That would generate about $6,000. So that still leaves $76,000 of loan to be repaid. If that went to the tax bills and just saying right now you have 1,740 tax bills. On the average tax bill, that would mean that would go up about $44 a year. And I know these are really ballparking numbers because tax bills are based on valuation and it's not the same for everybody. But just if you took straight out the number of tax bills you had and divided it by that loan on average, it's going to be $44 a year. Okay, on page six. This is if the taxpayers covered all of the capital repayment. So the total amount of $82,660 per year. That would make the average tax bill go up about $47 per year. And sewer users are still going to see some increase as they do over time because operation costs do go up. But in your particular case, you're not changing the scenario of how you're going to operate your plant or upgrading what's there. So there shouldn't really be a significant impact to the annual operation and maintenance. But those users generally do already pay that burden and they still would continue to. When we have this kind of situation, a lot of times people who aren't on sewer just sort of like, why should I pay for that? Nobody helps me with my septic system or, and they're, you know, that's an understandable argument. But at the same time, we're looking at the community as a whole, the things that are in the downtown area, town office, school, businesses, churches, and some major apartment complexes. Those are all things that the town community shares as a community. And water quality is important for tourism and shell fishing and it also improves the values of the properties that are on sewer, which does increase the tax base. So it sort of cycles back a little bit. So one of the things as we go forward towards having a public hearing, likely at one of your July, I think we talked about July 7th.
Yes, that's the next meeting.
Okay. And preparing folks for discussion at town meeting. I guess, I'm not sure what the board's thoughts are. If people are asking the question, how's this going to be repaid? You know, if that's something that you want to make a decision on, talk about, get more options? Or what your thoughts are on that?
Mandy, do we have to put that in a warrant article, how it's being paid back this year?
Nope, not at all. It's just that sometimes when you go through a situation like that, if there's a general consensus that this is a good deal, which it is, and this is something the town should go board with, then you don't have to worry about it. But sometimes there are people who don't want to vote for something like this and you want to educate them as to the benefits. That's really your strategy, your community. You know what you might feel like you need to do here. I mean, we've done things like mailers or had the public hearing or we could just have the meeting on July 7th.
So what are we voting, what are we voting for in the warrant? To accept the grants? We've already done, accepted the grants, have we not?
The warrant article, and again, there's a bond counsel. It's a special kind of attorney that has to write the warrant article in the right language based on your town's rules and what rural development needs to see. But yes, you're voting, the town is voting to proceed with the loan.
Okay, the $2 million loan.
And the rural development grant.
And the rural development grant, because they're two, they're together.
And the loan. But I mean, pretty much as a no-brainer, the people are going to accept the grant. Now, the loan is the thing that sometimes people get along on.
If it goes hand in hand, you can't get the grant without the loan.
That's right.
Right. I did read that.
Yeah.
Still very straightforward.
Yes. Sounds, well, I appreciate all the hard work you've done. Although it's an astronomical figure for a small town, $3 million is amazingly grateful that you were able to get all that grant money and I certainly can appreciate all the work you've done.
Yes.
Thanks. So I guess I'm assuming that you're going to want to do a presentation on that for the public hearing on the 7th, which I can do similar discussions. I just need some direction from you about, I guess if you want me to just present the scenarios and then if you're going to figure out later how you pay it back or how you want to talk about it. You don't have to decide right now.
We could have a public hearing, what, at 5:30 before the next meeting? Because we have to sign the warrant correctly that night. I think it would be good to have some kind of informational meeting before, instead of trying to talk about this at our annual town meeting. If people really are interested, we should probably have, I think we should have a public. A half hour should be enough. Do you think, Renee?
I just have to put it in a warrant. However, we end up at.
Well, I think that you're going to have to have, the warrant's going to have to be as it is. I think the public hearing is to explain the warrant. I don't think we're going to change the warrant from the public hearing.
Well, is the warrant, can the warrant be written with choices in it? Like who will decide how we pay for it?
The bond counsel is going to give you specific language. They're going to want to be the warrant article. They're going to write the warrant article.
I don't think it's going to say how it's going to be repaid right now. It's just, all it's going to say is that we're going to accept the. Accept the loan. It's up to the public. The next annual meeting as to how we're going to go about repaying it, correct? We would have another whole year. We're not going to accept the funds.
You won't be taking anything back for 2024.
That's what I, so that's what I'm saying.
But I bring it up to how you want to do it right now is because it, there's a lot of people say, say there are people against it. They're going to, how are you going to pay it back? It's nice to have some kind of an answer. If you think we're generally going to support this, then it's not necessarily an issue.
Yes. I think they're going to want to know how to pay it back with everyone.
We'll have to go prepare to explain that.
I think the public hear, I mean, you're going to zoom the public hearing or are you going to come?
Whatever you want.
Are you far away?
I could work best. I mean, if.
Warner Harbor.
Warner Harbor.
I could do whatever you want. And I'm happy to come down there if that's what it's going to take.
I think that would be great if you could come down to this one public hearing. It might solve a lot of problems. And answer a lot of questions. And we can put it on the board.
So you're going to do it on July 7th at your regular meeting or something separate?
Just beforehand.
Let me ask, we've got something from the Quaddie Ties here. John, what are the chances that I can get an ad to Edward French tonight for a public hearing for this issue? Because there won't be another issue until after the meeting.
Probably not, but it was worth a try.
You put it in your article?
Can you put it in the article?
Yes, I can read that. And I'll be talking to him tonight also.
All right, I'll email it to him.
I'll do talk to him. I've already got an ad in there, you can just add it. It's important, it's an important dates ad, like our town likes.
So do you want to come at 5? It's 5 to, 5 to 6 maybe.
Is this a larger ad or a smaller?
Just, just some kind of.
Let's do it at 5.
5, we'll do it at 5 on July 7th.
5 o'clock on the 7th.
Because you never know, you may have many people with questions, especially if it gets out there. We'll put it on the green sign there that we're going to have a public hearing about the wastewater treatment upgrades and how repayment. Or something that would interest them to come, just to show up at the meeting. Thank you so much, Mandy.
What we can do, and this is up to you, we can do a mail order too. And when we have time to do that between now and then, tell people what's going on.
Well, no, I think personally, and we'll just put it, we'll have it up, we'll put flyers up, people will know.
Okay, that's perfect.
You want to make a motion for the public hearing?
Yes.
I have moved as we go to public hearing, July 7th.
7th at 5.
At 5.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you. We will absorb this payment. I might have a question or two before. Okay, Mandy, thank you.
All right.
The next thing on the agenda is 4th of July office was closed on the 2nd instead of the 5th. Is that right? Instead of the 6th.
Instead of the 6th. They have the Friday office, the Monday.
Yes, because normally we, so that, yes, the celebration committee has put all the activities on Friday so that we would like to close the town office Friday instead of Monday. Makes more sense. So we need a motion?
I move that we close.
She's on the ball. I need a second. Well, motion second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Jason can come lately.
So we're going to be dedicating some, who donated the benches?
The Lions Club is doing the dedication.
The Lions.
Club bought them.
So the Lions Club is dedicating two benches to James McFadden Sr. and also to Willie Corry. So we have a, should I read this? So we have to sign this.
Yeah, read this one.
Read this one, yeah.
They pretty much say the same thing.
Okay, to the family of Willie Corry and Jimmy McFadden. The town of Lubac expresses its gratitude for his many years of community service and dedication as a selectman. This commemorative bench will display his name and will serve as a place to gather and reflect on those that have gone before us, leaving a local legacy. We can only hope that future people of Lubac will wish to serve as selflessly, selflessly as Willie did. On behalf of the town of Lubac, please accept our heartfelt appreciation. So I need a motion to sign both this and the one for Jimmy McFadden. All in favor?
Do these, will these benches have a permanent place?
They're already set up there at the monument.
Oh, really? Lovely.
Two great people.
Yes. So I'm going to be over there and I, if anyone would like to join me would be great to do this, to give this. Walk over on the, July 3rd at 1 o'clock, right? Trying to get Sam to come up and sign this, we have an empty spot. Opened house of flyers for pretty bits.
Property service.
Three. Jason, you'll have to pick Sam's place in the.
Oh, I was thinking of that. The goodness of God.
Okay, whatever you need to do. I want to open these things and figure out which one for what and I'll wait them. So lot 25. Lot 25. Well, you have to open lot 16, lot 16. It says, it says lot 25. Oh, 16. Lot 16, lot 25, lot 16, lot 25. I don't know what this is.
16, lot 16.
Which one do you have there?
This is map 3.
Is it?
Which one's that?
Oh.
I don't know yet which one it is.
Map 3 is the Blackwood Lane.
Both of these are Blackwood Lane. I want to see what that one is. Where's Blackwood Lane?
It's down before the old town dump.
Up by the old dump, it's a little.
Oh, it's the retarded old properties, you know, they separated all of those little lots that we had been selling on previously.
This is for 16 lot 2.
So cash is a deposit check for $2,020 on the tax sale for map 3, lot 25A 14. So they have offered, the bid is $20,200. I have to check for my, that checked off.
Who was the bidder?
Lori Goland.
$20,200.
$20,200.
Lori Goland.
And that's just the, I think it's that lot.
About two acres.
About two acres? Is it short one?
No.
Okay, what's the one here?
It's going to be a lot. 3 and 5A.
Okay. So she will find my bid of $16,200 for the parcel described as map 3, lot 25A. I thought I turned it off.
So 16, 2 on that?
16,200.
Is that time a one for 5, 100 dollars?
These are all for.
What do you know?
16, lot 25, which is Lower Water Street.
The one that was 16, 2 was lower water?
No, no. We want to deal with this one.
We didn't get any on it. That one up by the airport.
So that one was 16, 2. We want to deal with one at a time, correct?
Well, yes, one at a time.
I will make a motion to accept.
There was only two of these, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the $20,200 from Lori Goland.
I'll second that. All in favor? We'll lose all, oh, you remember.
And you seconded Carol.
Yes, all in favor? Okay, that's that one. Now, if that's this. This is all for one property?
Which property?
Lower Water.
Lower Water, 38 Lower Water. Is that the one that's right about that? We had a big bid.
Oh, I thought you said open them.
No, we're taking them off, we're going to open them off. Paperclip them so we don't lose them. Okay, I submitted a bid for this property. This is 38 Lower Water Street, lot 16 lot 2, $33,333. 33, 333. And that was Georgiana Kendall. And this is. This is a bid of. You know, bid is, okay, this has a bid of. I am bidding, his name is Corbin Larson, $31,101. $1.
$1?
No, $10. No, not $1. Don't ask me whether $10 is. Lot, there you go. Okay, so, this one, this is in here.
That, what I believe is...
Oops, $25,555 from John E. Corriere.
Corriere.
Of Clark Lane.
Of Clark Lane.
Or 10 Clark Lane. But this is another one? So, this all came in here, all this from the LMS. This is Nicholas and Tonya Green, got the hay grass? $28,000 for the property.
Lot 28?
Is that the last one?
No, there's one more, just in here. This is... This is a letter to the board of selection, they sent it to everyone. You want to read it?
From the family.
You got to read it. I'll give that copy to them. Okay, yeah. And here, Dixon, where's your copy? Rachel, do you want to read it on the line?
I would.
Okay, Dear Board Selectmen, around June 5th, I was asked by a friend of the family who resides in Lubac if I was aware that Adrian's property was up for bid on June 23rd. I was not. She provided me a copy of the town's sale document. This particular property has been in our family for 40 years, and our family has been paying taxes on this community since, this community since the 1800s. I am Adrian's aunt, sister, and guardian to his mother Janet. Adrian has been homeless, destitute, mentally disabled, and in past data for years. Adrian has had no contact with the family nor have we known his whereabouts. As far as notices from the town, we could not have received them at any address the town chose for contact. He has never resided in my home, and neither Adrian, myself, or any family member have ever lived at 155 Fletcher's Landing, where it's... Cash bills have been sent to my attention in the past for Janet as her guardian. I received mail for a lead writer whom I do not know and returned to the mail carrier, 18 U.S.C. Section 1702 makes it illegal to open correspondence addressed to someone else. Federal law makes it a crime to do so. No notices were sent to my attention or to my name, or I would have been opened there. There are family members in the Town of Lubac who were not notified, but could have been easily. The moment I heard the tax sale, I called the town on June 7th, 2/21, to try to pay and discharge the debt, but was told by the town I could not. Up until 2018, this property was owned by both Janet and Adrian. As Janet's sister and legal representative and guardian, I paid the taxes and utilities on both prior properties to include the property next door for many years since 2001 and have a vested interest. Before she was placed in long-term care, I removed Janet's name, thereby giving Adrian sole ownership of the property on 2/26/18. Before removing Janet's name from the deed, I paid all billable payments on the property to the town and sewer from February through December 31st, 2018, as directed by the State of Maine Probate Court. There is a record, recorded lien dated on October 11, 2019, for property taxes from 2018 that I had already paid to my recollection along with the sewer. This property has a tragic history of being repeatedly vandalized, burned, and used in town dumping grounds. At considerable expense and request of the code enforcement officer at the time, I boarded up the windows and cleared the property from illegal, as an illegal dump site. Adrian was forced to move out due to the vandalism in 2013. Somewhere between 2019 and 2020, I received a letter from the new town enforcement officer whom I talked with and informed him that the property was to code her, the prior enforcement officer, and additional illegal dumping should not be the responsibility of Adrian. He agreed, and I gave him a phone number in case anything needed to be done. Although he did not contact me again, I still have no contact information for Adrian's whereabouts. Please consider this letter a formal bid of $5,000 for the town's interest in my nephew, Adrian Meyer's property. According to the town tax sale document, there are arrears and property taxes to a principal interest and cost to the total of $4,724.29. The minimum bid of $25,000 is in excess of the town's real interest and my ability to pay, given the following circumstances. Adrian is not capable of any commitment to the property through no fault of his own. I have financial vested interest over the past year. The town cannot accept my payment for arrears. The selector determined the price of the property based on their perceived value for profit and not the town's real interest in the property. Either Adrian myself or any family member actually received any notices. I cannot afford to pay $20,000 profit to the town above and beyond what is owed for principal interest and administrative fees. I request the board to please grant me...
Hello? The video is muted. It says Renee Gray has it muted. I was wondering if you could unmute it?
Sorry about that, she couldn't hear any of this.
She knows what it says, she wrote it.
I request the board to please grant me the bid I have submitted for your consideration to fully pay for past due taxes and sewer for the proceeds. As sales document states, the bid is for the purchase of the municipality's interest in the property, and I am offering more than that number. Regrettably, I'm not able to attend the meeting as I watch my small grandchildren. I'm reachable by phone during this meeting or at any time. Thank you for your time and consideration of these extenuating circumstances. What would you like to do with this letter?
This is me, by the way, I'm attending by Zoom, but I don't have a camera.
That's okay, yeah, we just read your letter to the board.
Okay, thank you.
My only question to you is, why did you take, why did you give sole ownership to Adrian if he's incapable of managing his affairs? Why didn't you keep your name along with your sisters, so that you wouldn't be notified?
I didn't, my name was never on it.
Well, your sister's was, I guess, so I don't see why any...
To take her? Sorry.
Why, just why was Adrian the sole, given the sole ownership of that property when he was obviously incapable of managing his affairs?
Because my sister, she is in psychiatric long-term care facility, and I've actually been caring for her since it was like, probably like 2008. And she, to get long-term care, she only had like the state and the property, but I had to remove her name unless she was not eligible for long-term care, which is about nine, 10 grand a month. And that's the only way that she could get long-term care, and she needed the psychiatric long-term care. So, I didn't have a choice. But I assumed wrongfully that I was still gonna get the tax notices, but I didn't get them. And I told Adrian, when I did see him, and he said, "Oh, yeah, I'm gonna pay the taxes." But obviously, he didn't, but I didn't receive a notice, so I didn't, because they always sent notices to me all along, and I didn't receive one. I had no idea, you know, it's not like I come up in the back very often or anything else. You know, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Well, I appreciate you answering the question. What would you like to do with it?
I will make, I will make a motion to accept Georgie Kendall's offer.
For 33,000, just on a 33?
Yep.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? This sounds short.
Yeah. Is that 3 to 0?
What?
The vote is 3 to 0.
Um, do we have any other property?
We have another property, but we didn't receive any other bids. So, we'll be putting back out, we showed 8, lot 25.
We have some caros, we're right, we put it up to 9.
Minimum bid was $20,000.
We should.
You wanna read?
Down at the bid.
Okay.
You were right.
This is 105 Pinkton. That's right, I was right. Did you say that louder?
I didn't.
I'm just kidding. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we put it back up, the bid at 15,000.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, we'll try that. June 10th. Well, I understand the federal government has made June 10th a holiday, when it falls on the weekend, it would be the Monday following, and that the town adopts that special holiday.
Mm-hmm.
Without any reasoning other than a special holiday. Yeah, all in favor?
Motion seconded to...
I'm on...
Ray, do you want a second?
Sure. Wastewater treatment plant, DEP inspection report. So, didn't we just talk about the wastewater?
Yeah.
Is this something different?
This is something different. This is the... The DEP, oh, wait, hang on. Oh, that's, that's not actually, that's just an... The DEP did their annual report of inspection of our wastewater treatment plant, and it's a very detailed, nice report.
Oh, yes.
But it's, we sent it to me, to Albert, who looked at it.
It went to Mandy, it went to Bruce, it comes to me.
And the bottom line is, we're getting fixed, right? I mean, we have to, that's why we're doing this, right?
Yes.
Because we have all kinds of issues, I imagine.
And there are a few things that Bruce is able to work on now. There's a pump that he can change now.
Okay.
To get the samples to where they want them to be. But overall, it was, it was a good report.
Yes.
Compared to, you know, with what he's facing, what he's dealing with down there. He's not a recognized gentleman. It's very clean, and she has good things to say about that. She does say the facility needs to be manned with 2.2 people. Well, we've got 2.2 people for the part time, but I think that's like all the time. It's, but, I mean, we do the best we can with what we have, and keep our sewer rates low.
Okay, that's good. So, this is another business. So, can we wait on this, because I'd like to do this, can we do this after? So, we have dangerous buildings on here, because I wanted to talk about the building that never seemed to get taken down on Monumental School, that is just half there, open.
Oh, with the Mansard group?
Yes, where it's just like a disaster, really.
The one thing I could say about it is that the lawn has been mowed.
I mean, I was shocked.
You mean, that's the one that the guy...
It was almost manicured lawn.
The guy was gonna come, and he was gonna tear it down for free.
Yeah, but he took all the good work, we haven't seen it.
And I said it was a bunch of crap then.
Yeah, I know.
I think I was right.
You were right.
There it is, with a big hole.
But this was not our choice.
No, no.
This was the owner.
I agree.
Who hired this person.
Now, we have a worse.
So, now, I don't know whether this needs to be on warrant, or whether because we have a dangerous building fund with the Select Corps Tenement Act, but it has to be under $5,000, or we have to, it has to go out of bid, correct? I mean, there's a procedure, a process, that you were supposed to bring, that we were gonna review? Well, there's a process where the town takes it over long enough to take down the building, and then inherently, it has to be returned to the owner, and then instead of putting the cost on a bill that has to be paid in six months, I, my understanding is, it is attached to your regular taxes, and then if for some reason they don't pay it, we do have first lien on it, correct?
Why don't we...
So, if it's sold, then we would get the money back sooner. But if it's not sold, it has to go to tax supplier property, then it would take us three years to get the money back.
Why don't we just make a decision to have a code enforcement pursue the dangerous building?
I want to take, yeah, we've already done all that, that's been going on, not on anywhere.
No, this is the official one. The official where it has to either go to court to get the judge to deem it, and then you do the evidence, which is saying...
I just want to make sure that if it needs to be on the town annual meeting, I want it on the town annual meeting. I don't want to wait another year, but that's only to look like that, killing the money.
There's enough funds, there's like 19,000 now.
I say we put it out for bid, get rid of it.
Yes.
Then she's gonna have to pay us back.
Yes, that whole process is...
So, we need, but the selector has the decision to do that. So, with his help.
Yeah, okay.
With the code enforcement officer overseeing the proper process of how we take it over and take the building down, let's make a motion, put it out to bid.
I'll make a motion to put the stuff to that home, out for bid, and the proper disposal.
And proper disposal, absolutely.
Gary will make sure of that.
And that proper disposal may include the various vermin that live in that house.
Well, they have plenty of doors now.
I remember the rats living in the Japanese knopweed last year, and I...
We have raccoons and scunts living in there now.
Yes.
Die hard, that's what I know.
Well, you hit it right on, because we don't want to have another peacocks.
Well, that's it, that's what I'm saying.
I say we abate the animals first, so we don't...
Perhaps, that would be wise.
Definitely.
Well, I hope it should just be one thing. You have to...
We'll put it in the bid, because we don't want to re-beat a peacocks.
Okay.
That was terrible, so...
That was not good. Who would like to make that motion?
I would, so, move that we...
Jason made it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, the motion, the motion is that...
I just include vermin.
Remediation. Vermin remediation.
They're rodents.
It'll just be a major harm for all the neighbors if we don't...
Yes, thank you very much, Jason, I agree with you there.
Terrible.
Second, all in favor? So, and the other issue for a town meeting, and I have, literally have not discussed this with the Shellfish Committee, because I just helped Amanda get all of these affidavits printed off, and they were not authorized at a special meeting, but she, they are in the process of pursuing eminent domain on some of the Shellfish access properties. I'm not sure which ones, but I know that the people that have been accessing the clamors, that have been accessing various properties around town are getting shut out in various ways. And they are wanting to try to preserve their long-used access, some of them over 50 years. I would like to put, I would like to propose that we put $10,000 aside to help them with their legal fees. If they don't need it, it will go back into the undesigned, and so, I'd like a separate warrant article for...
For the town to roll over?
Yes, for the town to roll over.
For this...
For the town to roll over.
The taxpayers.
But we have to put, we have to propose a warrant.
I will put it on there.
We'll see how it goes.
We want it to roll over if it's not used in a year, because the court system could be backed up.
Yes, I mean, that can be all worded in there, and then hopefully, the clamors will turn and...
Yeah, we'll just put it in as warrant, because that's up to the taxpayers to...
Yeah, well, of course, of course it is, but we have to put it on.
Can I ask, as noted before, there is, this is a two-sided issue. Is there a possibility of arbitration as opposed to a straightforward lawyer coming in?
I think that they've probably gone to the landowners, I don't know, there's separate different kinds of, there's organizations, there're nonprofits, there's private ownership, there's many accesses that have been cut off, multiple accesses. I think why, why they need a lawyer is to decide which ones, or if any, they have a real case to, and then they would arbitrate through the lawyer. The lawyer could say, yes, you know, these people have been using this for 45 years, and what can we do? I think they, we need someone to protect the interest of the town. We can't just have a revolt and go on.
And someone there to...
So, that doesn't mean it's going to court, it just means we need to have legal guidance on how to move forward with even arbitration. I don't think that...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that both sides are...
Well, both sides will definitely, I'm sure, have plenty of where we're going to get their own representation.
Good, good.
I'll make a motion when you put it on a warrant.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So, now, I think we have another bid, this was for the...
Solar, yeah.
The, that property of leasing. And how many, is this just one bid?
One bid, is that all?
Well, I don't know, maybe there's like a...
It can't catch you.
I know.
You are on.
Yeah.
While we're opening this, I'll just make an announcement, that absentee ballots for the local election, August third will be available July first.
Oh, boy.
Oh, another one of those individual.
Some for other people.
How far do you...
Okay, so, this may, may not be able to be decided tonight, but we can always look at it. I'm sure I wanna read it first. So, one-year lease rate, flat rate is five thousand seven hundred dollars, total revenue over twenty years would be... I'm not sure how they get to two million, that doesn't make sense.
It's per acre.
Oh, per acre, yeah. So, one-year lease rate escalator, five thousand seven hundred, total revenue over twenty years. Well, that's pretty good. So, that's a flat rate of fifty-seven hundred dollars per acre. How many acres do we have there? Is it, are you double acres?
If it's forty-six, then we use three acres.
So, I'm sure that we need to, we need to figure that one out exactly, because some of it may have to be retained for public works. So, do we, did we, did, in the RFP, what acres, what did we say in the RFP? So, um, I, I would like to table this, so I can, we can review it.
Yeah.
Looks good to me. I'm getting a thing, sewer treatment plant loan. Where were we gonna get that money again?
I, I love solar, anyone.
So, that's certainly something that...
What's that two thousand?
That's behind the, uh, behind the public works garage. What's fifty-seven hundred times forty?
The problem with tabling is, it's gotta go on the town meeting, so they pull up the lease, so it's on the warrant.
I could, I could...
I have to make a decision on this.
We could, we could take a look at this and come in before the...
But what we could do, we could put it on, yes, to accept this could go on the town meeting, and then we could review this beforehand. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a prob, the town should be allowed to look at this and decide anyway. I just wanna be able to read it before I make a big, before my personal opinion is. So, how many acres did we send us in the RFP? So, I'm just, there's no way to calculate it. I'm just trying to figure out fifty-seven hundred times forty is, how much a year? Trying to come up with eighty-three thousand dollars to pay off the sewer. And we have to see what they're gonna do to the land, because I know one of the requirements was two hundred and... According to my calculations...
Forty-three acres.
Forty-three. They're really giving us... Times forty-three.
Yeah.
Two hundred forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Perfect.
For how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty years? And then, and then the, the land comes back to us? We keep, it stays there, you know?
Entire land.
So, let's see, so we're the small print.
We define practical.
Yes. Sounds like, uh, sounds like a win-win to me.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I do remember specifying that we weren't to see it from the boat, and we weren't to see it from the water. And that's, I think, important to the environment, as, as environmentally friendly as solar panels are, we don't wanna thrive on it.
Don't have a visual.
No, we don't wanna visualize.
Should we have a public hearing on this prior to the...
They would have to, I don't know. I don't, yeah, probably.
What if the king...
Yeah. A public hearing.
Did you come to a public hearing?
Would it five, before the town meeting?
No, because I don't think that should be more grounded with all the other things, there's lots of important issues. If you wanna do a public hearing, do it before the select board meeting, the next meeting.
This could be...
The next meeting, not the seventh, but the next one, before the next one, July, whatever it is.
Have a public hearing on that?
Yes, another public hearing, one is gonna be for the sewer, and then the next one is gonna be how we're gonna pay for it then. I like it.
Yeah.
Like it, do we like it, Nancy? We all like it. All right, we need a mo, motion for a public hearing in the following meeting, I don't know what the following meeting date is.
Well, the, the next one for us would be the seventh.
But after that, because the public...
After that, that would be the twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Public hearing before the twenty-first. Perfect.
Was that a motion you just made?
Pardon me?
Was that a motion you just made?
Uh, um, I'll make the motion, yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, who else comment?
Couple questions.
Questions?
In the past month, pardon the thirty days, there have been two emergency meetings accordingly. One was for the planning board, and one was for the select board. Both of those meetings involved a subject that involved a building mine that is being devastated by, by the building in my right. And in both of those meetings, I was not invited, when the subject of the conversation for that meeting involved a property I own. I wanna know why.
Well, I was in at the planning board meeting, and I had nothing to do with that, and I was not even invited myself to that. So, definitely answer that one, you'll have to ask the planning board about that meeting. The select board meeting was called because the planning board had submitted a letter to the select board on procedural issues. I don't believe it had a partic, it was more on procedure. And, and my, my interpretation was, it was a procedural question, and not a specific building question, on a building.
It absolutely had to do with my progress.
But it was...
The procedure, I believe, was that there was a stop wire put on construction down there. And somehow, uh, it was put back on by a temporary code enforcement officer.
Correct.
Who had no idea what was going on, and I was told by the town administrator that, oh, there's no right of way, they can build down there. That, that had nothing to do with what was going on, but there is absolutely a right of way there, in the deed. And we have information on that, okay? So, I wanna know why the public wasn't involved in this, why I wasn't informed as a building owner, as a property owner that's being affected by what's going on here, and affected by that stop that was taken off, and why I wasn't notified.
I called the department of, after you came to our meeting last, two weeks ago, you came to the meeting, I called that next day to the office of the fire marshal, and got the supervisor of the Department of Public Safety, and asked them the question of, should the code enforcement officer be responsible for enforcing other permits on buildings in, besides the shoreline zoning? Basically, you told me, and I did read the letter from him, you weren't here, but in the meeting, I read a letter, an email from him, that we are only, um, we only have the authority to issue shoreline zoning permits. And that is really what the meeting was about, it's not about whether they can build or not build, it's whether they can build in shoreline zoning. If there was an easement or a right-of-way, um, that had something to do with the, the, um, former Annabelle's expanding, that would have had to be, they explained, because we don't have a building ordinance, but all of that responsibility fell on the owner itself, not on the town.
Okay, that's not what I was told, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, okay, go ahead.
I'm talking about why there were two meetings, both involved in my building at one point or another. Why I wasn't involved.
I think the planning board had a meeting involving specifically your building, then yes, I think probably you should have been, at least, did they not notify you as a result of the meeting?
They didn't notify me that there was gonna be a meeting involving my property. Was the press notified of this?
Something that you would have to bring up to the planning board, their chair, and the code enforcement officer, because we really do not, we, we do not oversee the planning board, the select board and the planning board are separate. You have to read our charter, they, they don't answer us.
I understand you said it.
They don't answer us.
An open meeting right now, why I was not informed of even meeting, with both meetings involved fifty property that I own. I'll be honest with you, Mike, I didn't know what it was about until I got up here.
The press was notified.
I, I had no clue what it was about until we got here. And it was an emergency meeting, you can only act on one act.
That was it, we acted on a letter that was given to us by the planning board, um, questioning, uh, it was actually, we, we were, it was actually something that we almost went into executive session for, because it was concerning the activities of an employee, employee, which would fall under executive session. It wasn't, it was about an employee, the, the letter was about an employee and their behavior and, and actions resulting from that. And I don't believe that, we weren't even sure it should have even been public, but we did invite John, we did tell John that we're having a special select board meeting. Why you weren't invited to the planning board one, I have no idea. That is something you're gonna have to ask Cecil, and you're gonna have to ask Gary, I can't answer to them. I can apologize if you weren't invited to this, the meeting that we had, I can, I can say that to you.
Brings up one more point. In all the years that people go on vacation, someone like that, why was it so urgent? Why was it so important to sign on a part-time or a lieutenant code enforcement officer while in prison, and full-time code enforcement officer on vacation? Never heard of it, no one's ever heard of it in this town, okay?
A deputy, a deputy code enforcement officer?
No one's ever heard of it.
I think Renee is concerned that...
Because she's on her vacation, we need to have someone here who can, what, do something that...
There's a lot of new construction and building going on, and I think she felt that it wasn't being covered properly when he was way down in Florida on a cruise ship, where he couldn't even be reached. He was out of, incommunicado completely, unable to be texted or anything, so that, I think Renee came to...
That's not true, but that's...
Well, I, I think if you're going to the Bahamas, you're not necessarily gonna be working on a, no, no. He was literally going on a boat.
But there was no great urgency, as far as I know, and as far as several other people I've talked in town, why another code enforcement officer could put in place?
But that's up to discretion of Renee, not any Tom, Dick, or Harry you speak to in town.
That's right.
Do you understand that? I mean, that is up to her discretion.
She came to us and asked for a deputy code enforcement officer, because she felt that there was a lot of construction going on, and there may be questions, not just, it wasn't all about you and your building, and, or...
No, I, I understand that.
It was about all of the different things going on in the town, and she wanted somebody that...
You're talking about tearing down buildings, and we don't even have a building inspector. Who's qualified in this town to tell whether a building is dangerous enough?
I guess everybody in the town, if they wants to look at that building unpleasant in school. Really, Michael?
Is it dangerous?
Can Renee answer the questions now, yes?
It's, it's dangerous, but, I, I don't think, Mike, anybody could have saw having a deputy...
Problem.
Having, having him reverse something.
He didn't reverse, can I clarify something?
Let Renee talk. Okay. The issue was, a stop work order had been issued from the code enforcement officer for two reasons. The application, the shoreline zoning application had expired two years, and the applicant had changed the footprint that he had intended. So, that's why the stop work order had been issued. They investigated it, the board was able to bring on a deputy code enforcement officer, so that the applicant could come in and resubmit a new shoreline zoning application, which is all he approved, that's it.
Which was so deep after the planning board?
No, the code enforcement officer has the authority to issue shoreline zoning permits, per the ordinance that's in it. Right, I can show you the page, it's on the table. The code enforcement officer has the authority, ordinance, to issue shoreline zoning permits.
But why, why does the town have a planning board? I just, same question I just asked.
To come up with laws. They're not enforcers.
Why does the town have a planning board?
To come up with laws, and the legislative...
Read the planning board.
The planning board has an ordinance as well, and they're both on our website.
They're to legislate, um, so for zoning, which we don't have, and to come up with a comprehensive plan.
So, just to be clear, the, the deputy code enforcement officer did not reverse a stop work order. That's not what happened. He issued a new shoreline zoning permit that was an updated one that the planning board had already approved.
Which is right on a building permit.
No, well, we don't issue building permits, they're shoreline zoning permits.
Intent to build, have one in my possession. It's there on our website. Thank you.
That's, that's it, I'm not sure.
Well, you know, Renee, I'm wondering, I'm, I'm just kind of planning board associate, uh, but like last week, I came to that meeting, and it was, uh, oh, Lord, it was, I felt like I was in the wrong place. Uh, you know, people were building on the shore, and when shores were rolling came, and trees were being cut down, and, I mean, how, how... You know, it was just such a disarray, the whole thing was.
I agree.
How did the town, the town, the select people in the planning board work together with it?
Yeah. The planning board is supposed to come up with ideas, legislation, new ordinances, revisions of ordinances that have outdated, such as our shoreline zoning ordinance, that's to fix the archaic shoreline zoning map that's hardly legible? That's what they're, they've been commissioned to do, they are not enforcers.
So, where, now, what resources do they have?
Well, I know that the planning board has been signed up for training coming up on July twentieth, to help us get all on the same page again.
Pretty much want the, they, they, they're here to follow the state rules.
Yeah.
Make sure that we go, institute them, CEO is the same way, they're bound by the state. The CEO was trained by the state. He goes to state training.
Well, I'm glad they have them training, because we're having, you know, so many new places, yes, Carol said they're popping up, I believe. And, uh, just that one night, I said, I saw three hits, and I said, it's a whole lot.
There's no building permits in the back, it's shoreline zoning permits, it's a permission to build in the shoreline zone. But there is no formal building permit, there's intent to build, notification to build, that is not a building permit. We don't have building code inspectors.
But just to go back to Michael, um, 'cause I learned a little more about the case, um, I think what's, what's confusing is that the code enforcement officer looks at a application, and I, and he always goes with planning board anyway, and he, he has, he has the authority to say, you can build to your property line, and you can build so much high, there's a height limit, and there's so much volume, and that's all they can say. It's up to the owner to read their deed and understand their deed to where their property line is. It is not up to the town to read a deed and interpret what it says. And I think what happens, what, in this particular case, is... There is an issue with the interpretation of an easement in the deed that is affecting your building, and that is really on the responsibility of the owner to know where their property line is. We can't give legal advice and say, look, your property line is here, or your property line is there, that has to be surveyed, or you'll have to get a lawyer to interpret the deed, or you'll have to have a, a decent researcher to go back in, in the history of the deeds to say what it, to find out what, what it says. So, I think, um, there's a limit to, I'm, I, I, I'm a licensed real estate agent, I don't practice right now, but I'm still certified as a real estate agent and broker. I know that I am not allowed to give legal advice. When, when someone comes to me and asks, and, and you know that, because you're elected, you're also a real estate agent. You, and as code enforcement officer, it's similar, they cannot give legal advice, they can just say, okay, you can build here, but that's it. They can't say, well, that's your property line, but maybe there's an easement on it that I don't know about. It's not their responsibility to interpret the, the, the easement on someone's personal deed. I, I sympathize. Close it down. Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Carol.
Paul.
Speak. I didn't pay my taxes in December.
Okay.
Okay, I paid them in May. I didn't pay for them in December because, as you've always know, the land down there, it was going to court.
Right.
Okay, so I came up in May and I paid, and I was told that I'm going to get charged interest because I didn't pay for December. Now, is that true? I'm going to get charged interest for December.
I don't have the, we don't have the authority to give the interest because it was voted on by the town in, in an article. The town says we have to...
But you both are the board, aren't you?
No.
We're not the tax collector.
The town is a legislative body and they have set up how the taxes are collected and they set the interest rate each year. We don't have the authority to weigh it.
There's a law.
All right, so who am I going to talk to over it then? Who do I go to to talk to over it? If I don't talk to you folks, then you folks won't charge me interest.
I believe you can ask for a tax abatement with a reason. You could go and ask for a tax abatement for a particular reason and then we can hear that. We can hear a request for a tax abatement, correct?
Yeah.
I believe that we can do that. So you can formally apply, you can get the bill and then you can come in and say, look, I want an abatement for such and such a reason and you can come in front of the select board. I'm pretty sure that...
You don't, I don't think that comes from the board, though.
Well, then you have to go to the tax assessor, right?
Yeah.
Right? There's a procedure for a tax abatement.
I did go to the tax assessor. I got one hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. I did not deduct that. I paid everything in full.
Okay.
Because the reason I paid it full is because I didn't pay in December, I put it going to court because between you folks up here, given the state, a piece of that property of mine down there, it tied everything up. And I don't feel that I should be penalized any more than what I've already lost as a taxpayer in this town.
Or not all of us. I wasn't for that.
But it doesn't matter. It don't matter who did. Whoever's on the board is on the board.
So you have already gone to Zeta or, or Jim to request a tax abatement?
I told Jim, Jim took off a hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. And I did not take that off my taxes at all. I paid it in full. And then I'm informed that I'm going to get charged an interest fee because I did not pay in December. And I said, how the hell can I pay for it in December if it's into the court system and I don't know what's going on?
I think we have to defer to Jim and Zeta that we're, we're willing to listen to it all.
That may have been a clear...
Did he give you an abatement?
He did. He told me what he took off. A hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents is what he took off.
It's, it's never come here, Paul.
So was that before the taxes went out?
What's that?
Was that when the ta, when did you talk to him? Had the taxes come out already?
The taxes had already came up.
So then you need an abatement and then you will get reimbursed for that interest. If you have an abatement owed to you, then interest...
But, you know, why don't we...
But we've never seen...
Well, I mean, if I'm going to get charged interest, then I want to get charged, I want to get my reimbursement since twenty-eighteen then since it's been tied up and I've been paying four months.
That has to be, you have to go to the assessor and request an abatement. And then it comes to us and we say, do you want to accept this abatement? And we sign it and that's how you get the abatement.
Well, Jim...
It doesn't start with us, it ends with us.
If Jim gave him a hundred and fifty-two dollars off, he's not an abatement in front of us, a hundred and fifty-two dollars.
And there's going to be an assessor's meeting at the next, at the July twenty-first meeting.
So maybe he's bringing it to us at the next meeting.
I don't think so, but you should...
I know it.
Meet with him between then and now.
If this happened back in December, I know it, if it's going to be brought up to you now, I've got my due.
Well, make an appointment by then and you'll do it.
Well, we'll, we'll, I'll follow up with him. I'll ask him what's going on. I, I have no problem with that. We, we'll collectively ask him.
Yeah.
We just...
Well, I'm just not going to pay the interest. That's all, bottom line. I mean, you guys gave the state the, my land down there to tie up. I mean, why should I pay interest on something that is tied up in the court system that I don't even know if I'm going to have or not? I mean, you bow to property, you feel the same way, wouldn't you?
Oh, I've been through it. I've been through it.
Well, you, I feel the same way, believe me.
I lost an acre and a half, two acres.
Well, how about I make the motion that we follow through with this whole...
Definitely.
...way to figure out what's going on and get some kind of resolution for you, Paul.
I haven't said that.
All in favor? So we'll, we'll work on this between now and the next meeting.
So pretty much what it is, Paul, is a hundred and fifty-two plus, plus the interest.
A hundred and fifty-two, four, ninety-seven.
Yeah. And the interest too.
Okay, well, we're glad to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You shouldn't be feeling like this. We want you to be happy. I want everybody to move back to be happy.
Yes.
There's not a lot of us. Let's try to be all happy.
This is supposed to be Renee. I'd like to move that we have...
Executive chef.
Oh.
Executive chef now. And was there any other comments on it? Nah, you probably had a...
I don't know why you'd say that. I'm just looking forward to Nancy.
Right now. But I'm going to tell him that you're going to follow up with what you want.